Next item, please.
Special reports. How the Dearborn Public School graduates perform at Henry Ford College. Dr. Maliko?
So we'll have Dr. Nealan, who's coming from the Henry Ford College. We appreciate his willingness to come here. Ms. Peterson and Mr. Majid Filola. And this is part of, I guess, a continuation from the college presentation. It was something that was requested by the board, so we appreciate their willingness. They're working great as a team as we continue to, you know, enhance the partnership between the college and the P-12. So we appreciate Dr. Nealan, all that you're doing, the job, Mr.--
Oh, my pleasure.
You know.
Well, good evening. And I think that this is a real-- this is a nice tribute to some of the work that Mr. Winston did here. So, Dr. Nealan, Mr. Filola, and I are here to talk about the review of the different initiatives we have with the college. We have our two early colleges. We have collegiate academies, dual enrollment, and of course, data on how our students are doing. So we are each taken apart.
Good evening. So we do have two early colleges. The first one, Henry Ford Early College, is 13 years old now. And the Henry Ford Early College Advanced Manufacturing is in the third year. Both of these high schools, both of these early colleges are located on the campus of Henry Ford College. The college was nice enough to give us a wing in a building A. They're both five-year high school programs, leading to both a high school diploma and an associate in applied science or science, or up to 60 credits to any university in the state. And our students are eligible for freshman scholarships on top of the 60 transferable credits. So they go as juniors, but they're considered freshmen for scholarship purposes. So we have two partners on these two public colleges. The first partner is Henry Ford Health System, and the second partner is Ford Next Generation Learning. Some of the awards we won at Henry Ford Early College, I won't go through them, you can read them, but we one of-- we are one of the top high schools in the state and the country. We were ranked the second best in the state by Bridge Magazine. In 2016, we were nominated as distinguished, nationally distinguished Title I school. We got the--
Your index is 100 this year.
Huh?
Your school, your index from the new index is 100.
Which means what?
Perfect.
Perfect or what? Thank you.
You'll take it. I knew something he didn't.
Our Henry Ford Early College health careers offer resources in applied science and health careers. Biotechnology, nursing, very popular, physical therapy assistant, respiratory therapist, surgical tech. Our students graduate when they're 18, 19 years old. They have a career already that pays $50,000, $60,000 a year. So they're set. They're a manufacturing school. We don't have our first graduating class yet. We're in our third year. We offer associate and applied science in advanced manufacturing or engineering. And next collegiate academy, Ms. Peterson will take a look.
So a lot of people don't really understand the difference between the early colleges and the collegiate academies. So the early college is a nice, small high school on the college campus, and the collegiate academy offers our students, who really want the big comprehensive high school feel, to also do the same thing. So they get, they get the five-year diploma slash associate degree or 60-plus college credits. However, they have to score college and career-ready on the PSAT. They have to have attended Dearborn High Schools, either Fortson, Etzel, or Dearborn High during their 10th grade year. And then they get offered what we consider a scholarship. And at that point in time, if they accept, they'll spend most of their time at their high school junior year. They'll take one college class first semester, two second semester. Their senior year, they'll only take one class at their high school. The rest of it is, is at the college. However, they get to walk, they graduation, they get to go to prom and homecoming and do all those things that we enjoy in a big comprehensive high school. And then their 13th year is when they would be, again, all on the college campus and end up with an associate degree, hopefully, or 60-plus credits, depending on what they decide and their diploma. Our Henry Ford Collegiate Academy, when you compare those students to national middle college students, the average amount of credits that they earn in 12th grade is about, for our 12th graders, is about 44, where nationally it's like 36.9. Average GPA, and this came from the Middle College National Consortium that did, collected the data for us. Our average GPA is higher when compared to nationally, and 95% of our students get a C or better compared to 93% nationally. So, and our collegiate academy students, our early college students, and actually our dual enrollment students, all do very well over at Henry Ford College. And Dr. Nealan will share that with you.
No, this is you.
Majid?
Yes, pass rate.
I'll read it, 'cause you don't have your glasses on. So, the percent of students passing college courses, if you look, the gray bars are collegiate academy, that's 100%. The early colleges is at 91%. And then the middle and early college national, or Michigan, average is about 90%. So we're exceeding there as well. Average GPA, our early college and collegiate academy students, again, exceed the Michigan early and middle colleges. Majid has done an excellent job of bridging the gap, really, between the college and, and the P-12. I can't really take credit for it. This man is a master at working with people on the college campus and really getting them to say yes to lots of things that were-- I'm like, they're never going to agree to that, and he gets them to agree to it. But we have waivers for college courses. He, he got our students' priority registration. Vertical articulation, his staff meets with the college staff regularly to make sure that what they're learning in the early college and science prepares them to be successful in a college science course. When we couldn't really work on the job shadowing that we had hoped when we created the early college for advanced manufacturing, lo and behold, he got them to do some rotations in the CTE manufacturing, right? And last year, we worked with our math coordinators and math professors at the college to create a senior college concepts math course, because some of our students don't test into college math. So we have provided with, working with Henry Ford College professors, an opportunity for the senior year. And we have a class at each high school of about 30 students that know, they knew they were going to be going to Henry Ford College, and instead of taking personal finance or business math, they're taking college concepts. And we have an agreement with Henry Ford that if they get a certain grade and pass the final, then they will be able to go right into college math. And it'll save them time and money during their college career. So that was a, an excellent partnership. It was interesting to watch our math coordinators work with the college professors. We're working on the plans for the Henry Ford pre-education. Early colleges, we're ready to go, but space is an issue in Dearborn. Did you know that? So we're still working on that. And we do participate on Henry Ford College's pre-education committee. So 1,122 is the number of courses, our dual enrollment. Now, this isn't early college, this isn't collegiate academy. These are other students taking college courses. So 1,122 courses taken first semester. And if you look at the scores--
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Is that the number of courses?
Courses. Some of our students take two or three at a time.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Wow, that's a lot.
First semester. Well, we have a lot of students in Dearborn. But if you look at how well our students do, you know, 83% of them get an A or B, and 93.5% earn a C or higher. So our students are really doing a nice job over there.
Great. I was about to say, I can only do things I do at the college because I work with people, such a doctor.
There you go. Very, very PC.
Well, thank you very much. You know, going back to something that was said earlier today, college for everyone. That's exactly what we're after as well. It's within our grasp. Henry Ford College is all about transforming lives and building better futures. And that happens in our district, I think Trustee Petlicov said it really well, in a unique way that most communities in the United States of America ought to be very jealous of. That we can start with learners that are pre-K and follow them all the way through to their career readiness and their opportunity, if they wanted to, to transfer on to degrees beyond the associate degree. So taking a look at a few of these slides really confirms that our students coming out of the Dearborn school system outperform the students from any other area that come to Henry Ford College. Keep in mind that only about one in four students at Henry Ford College are from the Dearborn schools. That 25%, however, has an amazing advantage in so many cases over some of the students from some of the other schools. If you take a look at this first slide here, you'll see that just over 90% of students coming from Dearborn High School will have a grade point average of a passing grade of a 2.0 all the way through to a perfect 4.0 at Henry Ford College. This next slide might look a little confusing. Let me walk you through it very quickly. It gives us an opportunity in so many ways to understand the choices that our students make and to maybe intervene earlier on to help them make smart choices, to continue to remain on the pathways towards their own success. So what you're seeing here are student cohorts that began in fall of 2013 in each one of the schools, and how they matriculate as semesters go on through to 300% of their time at the college, which would mean for the span from 2013 to 2018. The real takeaway from this data is that more students will actually transfer to four-year colleges than will actually complete degrees at Henry Ford. That's not an embarrassment to us. In fact, it's a sign and a symbol that we're doing absolutely the work of our community. We are not spoiled in any way by having many more transfer institutions in the Dearborn and greater Detroit area than we actually have two-year colleges. And so they want to see our students just as soon as possible, and your students are usually ready to go at a very fast clip. We do want to take the time, though, to speak about how we can work collaboratively in order to address college readiness, where students might not necessarily be making the most seamless transfer from high school to the college. That is not a fault of the students. Sometimes we have to understand that that's actually something that we own. And I think Ms. Peterson spoke to an excellent example of how we're trying to close that gap, by bringing high school faculty together with teachers from the college and to be able to say, "Your point of arrival and our point of departure are not really meeting up, and so let's identify and close that gap." In this slide, you'll see that far more than any other school district, students are coming college-ready for mathematics when they come out of the Dearborn High Schools. 34% of a college-ready rate is actually very, very high for, for the nation. But we cannot ignore the fact that still more students approach the college experience needing at least one developmental math course. And so we're getting aggressive, and we're getting together in our, in our best practices in trying to really put the college out of the business of developmental math. So we are addressing this and handling this in the high schools. It's been a wonderful, wonderful collaboration. There's another thing that we're doing for the student that doesn't want to take advantage of that in high school, and that's when they come to college, we tell them something that doesn't actually make sense in math, that four plus four equals six. And what we're doing is, in the time of six credits, actually working the student through two co-requisite four-credit courses. Now, here's what beats all the odds. You would think that students that would take one year to complete a developmental course and then the gateway college course would not perform very well if you telescoped that and asked them to do it all in 15 weeks. But we have masterminded a, a, a plan for student success that not only makes that doable for our students, but that students graduate that and complete both the developmental and the college course in one semester in over 85% of the cases. So it's really just astounding work, totally counterintuitive to what you might think you'd find. Yes, sir?
Five plus five is 10.
Five, I know, the math classes are fives.
You have a five-credit Math 115 class and a five-credit Math 175 class, which is 10 credits. Now, our students are able to take--
And they're able to do it in--
Math 165, which is six credits, and go to Math 180.
Exactly, exactly. So we're saving time, we're saving money, and we're letting students pay attention to keeping themselves on the pathways. Reading is another area that we need to pay attention to. Most of our students coming out of Dearborn are more than college-ready for reading. That's a wonderful thing. But you can see that we still have those for whom some boost in their reading might be something very, very helpful. One of the ways that we can do this, and I'm hoping that we'll spend some time again putting our teachers in contact with one another, is to think about contextualizing reading within the content courses that they're actually taking in the high schools. So in other words, let's not talk about creating reading classes. Let's just do more and differently with the reading skills in the courses that students are taking. We find that that works at the college level. And in terms of writing placement results, to see 63% of the students college-ready for writing exceeds beyond the wildest imagination, the success that you see at the national level. Here again, students enter Henry Ford College. If there is a need to do some preparatory work, they can enroll in an accelerated learning program that, again, in one semester, will take them from that developmental course through, seamlessly through, they don't even know that it's happening, through to the completion of the college-level coursework. We also just launched a writing center. We house it in our library, and our hope is that we'll be able to extend the, the services that that provides to all of our early college students, certainly to all of our collegiate academy students.
And this is just future ideas that we have been tossing around. Obviously, we really want to open the teacher preparation early college. There's been talks of a possible performing arts early college, but that's just an idea that's been tossed out there. And something to do with reading. Originally, it was the idea of an elective their senior year, but we're not sure students would really go for that. The math works because they have to take a senior math, so that kind of worked. So we're going to work on collaboration with that.
So, let me just say that the idea that one of our own teachers brought to our attention of growing our own future teachers in Dearborn for Dearborn is a dream that we share with you. We need to find space on campus to really launch that early college. We're also going to be launching this fall, I believe, a concentration in computer information systems within the community, within the collegiate academy. Students will be able to follow that pathway, and our hope is that we will turn that into an early college just around the corner as well. One of the things I'd love to see us think about doing, even with reading, might be really out of the box, and that would be to identify our Dearborn students that are Phi Theta Kappa honor society students at the college, and see if we might be able to buddy them up with students in third grade. We know that if we can manage third graders reading on the third grade level at the time that they're in third grade, we can almost double the chances of their success in college.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Well--
Yeah, please. Your microphone.
We needed to mention the college just got the grant for University of Michigan, Ann Arbor. Ann Arbor is interested in the humanities. And part of the grant the college wrote, specifically wrote in it, are collegiate academy students. Basically, they will get the counselor from Ann Arbor and a counselor from Henry Ford to work with them. And Ann Arbor is saying they guarantee transfer 60 credits.
Wonderful. Wonderful. I know everybody's got questions, but I just want to say upfront how important this work is, and I'm so appreciative of the three of you leading that. I've always wondered why we, if a P-14 system, why we can't help identify, the college can't help identify students in the P-12 system that need support so that they can be college-ready when they start, as opposed to us at the college giving them two or three developmental courses in the subject areas that they don't even like? So it's a, you know, we've never, never had really good success with students going through developmental education. So this is really critical and for, for the success of all of our Dearborn students in particular. So having this communication between faculty of the college and faculty of the P-12 and the administration together, it just gives me great hope for the education of our students in this system. So, yes, trust, trust in us, sir.
One of the things that we had discussed last time that I wanted to bring up again was the math placement results here are 34% college-ready, while the reading and writing are at 63%. And one of the ways we could help have our students be college-ready is by having them take their placement exams in the spring rather than waiting until the fall to get them. So we can start that this, this year. So we have lots of students that already are applying for school. Once you get your acceptance, take your placement exam now. That way, you're able to place in a higher, higher course rather than having the summer slide and waiting, you know, wait, you're losing that two months.
Yes, it's a great idea. If I may add, we learned a lot in our years with the college. We learned a lot about the placement test. We learned not to have our students take it together. We don't have 30 students from one high school take it together, because it was first, when a student is done, everybody's going to look at them, why is it done? They're going to rush through it. So we tell our students, do it individually. We see higher success. We actually had our staff, my staff took the placement test, so we know what it looks like, so prepare our kids better. So we are learning as we go.
Okay. The only thing I would say about that is, the goal of taking those placement tests
is not just to show proficiency at that moment. When they take it in the fall, right when they're going to be starting those classes, if they took it in the spring when everything was fresh in their mind, they're still going to experience that summer slide, so to speak. And if they didn't retain that and they go into the fall having placed differently and the spring testing because it was still fresh, they're going to struggle with that fall placement if, if they haven't retained that information. So the, I, I believe the thinking of having that placement closer to when they're actually going to sign up for the courses is to see where they're at, at that moment, that they're going to be beginning--
Well, there is some truth to that, but, but also the placement test is adaptive. So if I get some wrong on stuff that I haven't had in a few years, like, I'm not even getting out of that test. Do you know what I mean?
Well, one of the things that we're also doing is, in the first three weeks of the math classes, students are in what we call a best-fit model.
Like a refresher.
Right. And we're working through them also to make a decision as to what their learning style and what the different pedagogical styles are and how they might mesh together. So some students will actually do much better if they're in an online math class, if they're in a math class that is a hybrid mode of lecture and online flipped classroom-type work, or if they're in a face-to-face classroom. And during those first three weeks, we kind of go back, make sure that we have analyzed the student's ability to move forwards, and we will move students between levels in order to accommodate their learning styles.
Oh, that's great to hear.
I can attest to that, because I teach part of the college, and we go through that process.
Trustee Elaine.
Well, I've, I've broken my brain over this issue for a long time, wondering why do we have students? First of all, why are they taking math in college? I really seriously have to ask. If they're not pre-engineering, why are they even taking math? It's because, I, I know the California community colleges are, and some others, are thinking about completely abandoning it. We know why they, they're taking English, because we're all speaking English. But most people in, in our society are not, sadly, are not becoming engineers. I mean, maybe everybody should, but why, I, I know I asked this in my own college math class. Why am I, why am I learning logarithms? I'm never going to use logs. I need to know how to balance my checkbook. But really, I think we should ask, why are they learning college math?
I think the, the essential question is probably, what math? What math does a student actually need? And that is work that Henry Ford College has been doing at the national level, through the Dana Center in Texas. And we've created in the state here something called the Right Math at the Right Time. So when a student comes to Henry Ford, rather than doing what they did to you and me, which was put us on a forced march to calculus, whether we needed it or not, and so you got your logarithms and you got everything else going for you, what we do now is actually start with, what is the student's ultimate goal, and let's reverse engineer it from there. So depending on the program that you're going into, you may never actually see anything like college algebra. You may be on a statistics course, and your math experience may be nothing more than one stat course, and you're done. So for someone who wants to be a future educator, statistics and the social science of education go hand in hand. That would probably be your course. Now, what if you're a person in the humanities? Probably not statistics, quantitative reasoning. So again, you're using mathematics to be able to solve problems, not unlike, you know, planning for a budget or something like that. And of course, for the pre-engineering students, there is no question, it'll start with college algebra, and it goes up really quickly from there.
But the other curious thing here is, it, it's always math that befuddles students. It's always, it's math that's the biggest problem for college students, more, more than any other subject of study. And yet, and, and we have English language learners. We have a high number, and yet our scores are better for reading and writing than for math. So I really wonder, are we, as a, as an educational community, are we setting up students for failure? Are we expecting them to learn something that they're really not going to use? Or, and are we, and are we jerking around tests to get bad results? And I'm not talking about anybody here, but I mean, at the state level, are we expecting things that really are, goals have to be realistic, achievable.
And they have to have a purpose.
And a purpose, right. So, I mean, it's sort of philosophical, but just very frustrating when I see, because I, I know students who know better, they know math better than this, and yet they fail these basic placements.
Well, I think you're talking a lot about advising, whether or not the advising is appropriate based on the goal of the student. If the student has a goal, an educational goal, that doesn't require certain kinds of math, then they don't have to take that kind of math. So we don't, that's what you're talking about, Dr. Nealan.
But they do, they do require a certain math. My, my daughter--
Not across all curricula.
Well, my daughter did, and she, she, that's what failed her.
Is that, is that fact, that every student has to take a certain amount of math at college, no matter what curriculum?
No, no. It would depend. If, if a student is working on a certificate, there might not be--
Well, she wasn't. She was working for her as associate.
Right. If she's working for an associate's degree, it may or may not be there. In many cases, what we've done is actually, again, contextualize the math. So instead of taking a college algebra course, a person might take a business math course, right? So what they're really doing, the math in, in the, that they will be working on is completely applied. Or they take a math that is a technical math course. So it will really look like reading blueprints, being able to take something that is sized at one scale, and being able to do the math that would, you know, either augment or diminish that to a different size. Students in the nursing program will do a lot with dosing, and they'll do a lot with the decimals, because again, they work with that, you know, much more frequently. So we really do try to make sure that the math is very relevant to the work that students are doing. Right now, for students that are actually on path to transfer, we do have to recognize the fact that the state of Michigan has established a Michigan transfer agreement that does require mathematics. So there is no ducking that bullet. One has to do a biological science, a physical science, at least one of those has to be a lab, and one has, has to do a math course at the college level. But that need not be the old standby, which cut everyone off at the knees, college algebra.
It doesn't have to be college--
Doesn't have to be college.
Yeah. So things are a little different than when we were in school. Yes. I'm sorry.
No worries. Not at all. And thank you for the presentation. Thank you for your work. And I also do value the relationship, and as we can see, it's provided invaluable opportunities for us. I am looking forward to a presentation, as I requested before, hopefully at some point, to see how our EL students are doing in terms of college readiness. And, and I think that once we get that data as well, considering the unique nature of our district, then some of these numbers, in terms of college readiness, would make sense, and we'll see where we can improve in our district. Now, quick question. In terms of the collegiate academy and Henry Ford Early College, is it 5.2% of these students are English language learners?
There's two separate schools. So I have the data here.
We don't know that by heart. I have to write it down.
I see on the fifth slide, it says on the bottom, 5.2-- I see on the fifth slide, it says on the bottom, five-point-two percent E.L.
For the early college healthcare, it is five-point-two percent. For the manufacturing, it's higher, it's actually about twenty-seven-point-one percent.
Do you see, I mean, that's a low number, you know.
And that's a lottery. They get into that.
Through a lottery.
So, they apply and we pull names.
And how about for the Collegiate Academy?
Collegiate Academy, they just have to score high enough.
And that's when, and that's over twenty percent of them are in?
No, no, no. No, the-
So, the advanced manufacturing, the two, I gave you the demographics on the two early colleges. I did not give them to you on the Collegiate Academies because they're in their high schools. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
That does make sense. And how do you feel like they're doing in terms of E.L. students in these programs?
They do great.
They don't have an option. I'm just, they, he has very high expectations and his staff support, and they don't have an option. They have to do great.
I have to tell you, we're very proud of the work. I'll talk about college readiness. We ask my students to take their English placement exam at the college in tenth grade. As a matter of fact, I just did it last month.
Good.
In tenth grade, we're not waiting for senior year. So, for example, this year, my health student took, I have fifty-four students take the English placement exam, fifty-two place English 131. Two did not.
Wow.
We're very close. For the manufacturing school, I have similar numbers. So, when we get them in ninth grade, they'll be ready. Trust me. I know the grade, they'll do well. They'll be fine.
Trustee Tharp.
What is the persistence rate for the students that come in either through the early college or the Collegiate Academy? What percent that start finish in that program?
We lose a handful. What we face is, our parents want their students with us, but the students doesn't want to be with us. And that student does not stay because if they nag enough to their parents, then they pull them out eventually. They claim they don't have that high school experience, whatever that is. So, if the parents want their students with us and the student does not want to be with us, they don't stay. And we have the occasion, we have a handful, maybe two or three, by eleventh grade, they lose the drive, they lose the stamina, they're not very successful in their college classes, they can't, they go to the other high school just to get their high school to go. So, it's very, very low.
And in the Collegiate Academy, we had, every student in the first two cadres have gotten their diploma. They've not all gotten an associate, but they've had the sixty-plus credits, so they don't leave that program. We had one girl actually contemplate it last year because she had the opportunity for a sports scholarship and ended up staying in the program.
Just some national statistics, which, since trustee Tharp brought it up, makes me want to go back and do a little bit of number research just on us. But, ninety-six percent of the community colleges in the United States of America have dual enrollment programs that look, in some ways, you know, like ours. I do think ours stand out as exemplar. Over two billion dollars are spent by community colleges on dual-enrolled high school students taking college-level courses. Now, that is money that the college is fronting. So, in most cases, understand that this is not a money-making venture for the college to have high school students taking courses at the college. But, here's the shocker. Less than eight percent of the students that begin taking college courses in high school actually ever graduate from the host college that provided those courses. And so, one thing that we really want to probably take some, a look at together is, what can we do to keep students here in Dearborn? The nice thing for us, of course, is the fact that they complete some college credit while they're still in high school. Then they might be at Henry Ford for a very short period of time, and they're off to a four-year school. But, as soon as they do that, they have just quintupled the cost of their college education. They've said, "No, thank you" to class sizes that have twenty-four students in it, and they've turned their back on three-hundred-and-sixty degrees worth of academic and student support services that were really designed for them. So, what can we do to help students understand that the smarter choice would be to gather credits while you're in high school, transfer and remain at Henry Ford to the completion of an associate's degree or your certificate, and at that point, transfer? That's something that I think we could all work on because students will save many hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the overall indebtedness for the greater Dearborn area will actually come down.
Trustee Hussein Barry. Trustee Barry.
Mentioned lottery, to get into the early college earlier. How many students actually qualify to get into the lottery?
We're doing the lottery Thursday in the Amish School office. We're still going through the folders. This year, we had about five-hundred-and-forty students apply to the early college health. We have maybe three-hundred-and-thirty-four that qualified based on letters of recommendation, completed application, everything we look for. We take fifty students.
Remember, for the early college, they have to pass eighth grade and be reading at the sixth grade level. Collegiate Academy, they have to score in tenth grade, college and career-ready. So, it's two really different groups.
Sure, I understand. And the other question I had was, going back to developmental math courses. If I heard right, we have one course at each high school?
Correct.
Serving thirty students each?
Students who identified they were going to go to Henry Ford College.
Yes.
That's, yeah.
Do we have any plans on expanding on that?
If there's a need, we'll do it, but right now, that was the, when the counselors met with the students and the math coordinators, that was the number that said, "I'm sure I'm going to Henry Ford because the articulation is with Henry Ford." So, but if they, if we needed more, we would have more.
It's not if there's a need, it's if they've committed to Henry Ford College, what you're saying, at that point.
Right, exactly.
Because we know the need is there.
And it's not that a student couldn't take it and it wouldn't help them with the Accuplacer or, what's the other compass?
It's Accuplacer now. Compass is no longer with us.
But, right now, that's the students that said, "Yes, we're going to Henry Ford. We want this opportunity." If more students wanted it, we would provide it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Trustee Elaine.
I'm kind of struggling with how to formulate this question or even how it would be discoverable. Do we know, Dr. Malako or Dr. Nealon, how many of our students pass SAT or ACT or formerly the MEEP or whatever? How many pass that and fail the college placement tests, either math or English? Or maybe Ms. Peterson looks like she knows something.
Yeah, because there really is no-
There's no connecting up.
There's no such thing as really, you know, passing the SAT. And we look a lot at the ACT. Because we are the people's college and we are an open-entry institution, we have students who have ACT scores in the range of thirteen, fourteen, and those that are certainly above of twenty-five. So, you know, we're open to all the students. I think the important thing in the question, however, is more along the lines of, would a student who has an ACT or an SAT score even be taking a placement test? And the answer is, no. We can actually do the placement based on their ACT or SAT score, and we're actually using now multiple measures. So, a student may not do well on a placement test, but we can look at their high school GPA, their ACT score, and base it on that, and we always defer to what is going to best serve the student. So, we place them as high as we can.
But, that thirty-four percent is about the national average for students that test college and career-ready on the SAT. However, if you remember, I provided information previously, our students that go to Wayne State, it's around sixty-some percent that tested into college coursework, math and language arts. So, it's just, it varies depending on institution.
I can't speak for the district or the college, but I can speak for my students. When our students take the placement test English, so if they take, if they place English 131, in my mind, they're going to be proficient in their SAT. There's the correlation.
I hope there is.
I see it.
I hope, so you think there is?
I see it with my kids. I can speak for the district. So, if they place English 131, I know they're going to be proficient in their SAT.
Annie has the scores to back that up.
Well, I just know anecdotally of situations where somebody, a friend of my daughter's who came out of Edsall Ford and was a good student, was going into nursing, took the math placement test because at that time, I think they weren't required to take their final year math. I think they had a three-year requirement. So, failed the placement and, you know, with a little bit of work, got into math 135.
She should have come to the Collegiate Academy.
Well, you know-
She said it when they only had three years of math. It was a while ago.
No, but also, Dr. Nealon's point is right. I mean, there is a sales, there's a marketing job that's missing for community colleges because a lot of people see a big, a big-name college, and that's what they want, and they're convinced that it's the name that's more important than the education.
Okay, thank, just again, you can see, I know it's been a very interesting dialogue conversation. Appreciate the presentation, but the partnership, appreciate the leadership of the board for the partnership. And I know I sent the board, I've already started some conversations with Mr. Cavell Huna, and we're planning to continue that so that we can expand these Collegiate Academy, the early colleges, and continue to do great things for students. And I appreciate, again, Dr. Nealon and the enthusiasm to really make this a real positive model as we place students at Henry Ford College. And I think you said too, that we could take this on the road and really show other colleges the great things that we can accomplish here, so thank you. And Mr. Filola and Ms. Peterson.
And just one, and I agree with you as well, Dr. Malako, but one last thing is, I love how we were able to see how our students are doing in terms of college readiness at Henry Ford College. At some point in time, it would be nice to get some data as to how they're doing at universities that they're attending as well. And I know that Wayne State, it's easy to probably, or maybe they've been cooperative, I'm trying to think of old conversations out of-
They've cooperated with the remedial course.
Okay, but I don't know if we've been able to get any data from U of M Dearborn or, and maybe we can work on that and if there's anything that we can do to get that. And I think that that would also be important in terms of college readiness to get just a broader picture as to how our students are doing at university level.
Okay, thank you. Can we move to the next item?